All right, can everyone hear us online?
Yes, sir.
Okay, great. All right, I'm gonna call this meeting of the Travel Council Advisory Board to order. Today is January tenth, twenty twenty-three. It is three oh seven. Present from board members, we have Sharon, Lacy, Alex, and Brian. So we do have a core president today. We have three vacant positions that will be addressing through some applications and some previous applications that we've interviewed. The front end of the meeting will be focused on resolving those vacant positions and making a recommendation to the county commission as to who amongst the applicants should be the new members on the board. And then there's some initial business that we have to get to with regards to just reviewing the bylaws, the annual meeting schedule. And we're gonna try to put two people on an ad hoc committee to review the special event and community events grant applications so that that doesn't have to bog down this general meeting. That takes that out of this meeting. And then we'll go over at the end some of the tourism marketing programs that with love that either has money and has a plan or does not has money, doesn't have a plan and kind of start that conversation this afternoon. Let's start with introductions. We'll go in the room first, then we'll go online. I'm August Grant, the Economic Development Director. Let's go clockwise.
Mary McGann, Commissioner.
Ben Alter, Economic Development Specialist.
Steven Stocks, County Attorney.
Sharon Trinsley, Board Member.
Lacey Shumway, Board Member and Executive Director of the Chamber.
Alex Burashevsky, Board Member.
Ryan Hutton, Board Member.
Beegah Metzner, Moab to Monument Valley Home Commissioner.
Robert Rivera, Travel Council.
Melissa Stock, Economic Development Assistant Marketing Director.
And then Melissa, do you want to just introduce yourself briefly? We'll hear more from you.
Melissa Jeffers.
Awesome. Let's go online. Howard?
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Yep, hello, welcome. I'm here interviewing for one of those vacant board positions.
Thank you, Howard. Kalen? He's driving. Can we, can you speak? Can't hear you. I'll introduce Kalen. Kalen is our City Council Representative, non-voting exesial. Rebecca?
I'm Rebecca Monso. I'm here interviewing for a position also. I'm with Vista Host Hotels. I am the Sales Manager of Homewood in Hampton.
Awesome. And then Rachel. And Rachel is our admin staff who's holding on the floor at the office and taking notes remotely. She wanted to mention that for all active members, we have to recertify our Public Meeting Act certification. So if you haven't done that, just remind you to do that and then submit that to us. And that is something that new members will have to do as well. And can you, can you just make a note and tell Rachel that that's basically Jeremy, just make sure he's gonna show up? Awesome. I'll keep going here. Now we've done introductions. Are there any conflicts of interest, disclosures, or exporte communication that board members would like to share? Seeing none, are there any citizens to be heard? Seeing none, we don't have any ad hoc presentations. So let's go to the first discussion action item here, approval of December thirteenth meeting minutes. I'm happy to pull them up, but I'm also happy to entertain a motion on their approval.
Make a motion to approve the minutes as written?
So awesome. I have a motion that's been seconded all in favor. I pass unanimously. We're on to interviewing applicants for Travel Council Advisory Board positions that expired December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two. We have three expired board members. Jason Taylor, representing a TRCCA and TRT paying business on the kind of car OHP rental side of TRCCA. Daniel Lovridge, TRT paying, representing the hoodoo at TRT paying business. And Jenny Gleason, representing a non-TRCCA or TRT paying business or entity that is part of the tourism ecosystem. So let's, there we go. There's Jenny. Let's, as a reminder, Jenny and Lori McFarland have both applied and interviewed at the last meeting. So they're in the pool of candidates that will be considering for nomination today. Once we go through the application and the interviews for the folks in here, we'll start with Melissa if you're okay with that. And then we'll go online. If that sounds good for everybody. Melissa, are you ready?
Sure.
Fine, there's two seats.
Do you want me to come up there?
Yes, Ben.
Yeah, Rachel said she's reached out to Jeremy and we've not heard that.
Okay.
And also she said her mic is broken, but she can hear us.
Okay, good. Yeah, you know, it's easier for the camera to see you. Maybe sit right there.
You got it. I don't fight very hard. Okay.
Not on Tuesday.
Not on Tuesday. But today again.
Yeah. Yeah, there you go. And we're asking the same questions of everybody. And for the sake of fairness, we're just doing those questions and no follow-up ad hoc questions with any other person. Are you ready?
Yeah, sure.
Okay. Tell us a little bit about yourself, your background.
Okay, so I am from a teeny tiny little town in the south, Scott County, Tennessee, which oddly enough, kind of where I began my life and where I'm probably gonna be ending it up. Our sister park was arches when I was growing up. So a lot of people don't know that arches even has a sister park. So it's called Big South Fork, and that's where I grew up in Tennessee. And it has all the same arches formations, but it's forested like the Great Smoky Mountains. So I grew up playing there in the trees and understand small towns and rural areas. And ended up in Utah for undergrad and grad school at the University of Utah and made locals and became a Utah permanent. And here we stayed. So we played in Utah. I mean, in Salt Lake, while the kids were all growing up, we would come to Moab, you know, two or three times a year. And then when they scattered to different parts of the world, we ended up here as permanent residents. So now we're here in Utah. My career has been corporate strategy, primarily revenue strategy. And that's where I really kind of focused. I've worked in publicly traded two and a half billion dollar corporations. And my job is to go and find the money and create the strategies and to say, what are all of our objectives? What do we need to accomplish? And within those parameters, I'll go out and find out where the money opportunities are and figure out how to grow those revenues and craft the strategy and execute on the strategy with the teams to be able to make that happen. So now, in my sort of third act of life, when the kids are gone, I have put all of my energy into my passion, which is taking all of those skills in the private sector and applying those toward economic development specific to the private sector. So that's my passion and my focus now is doing that on the private side, economic development specific to rural towns like the one that I came from. And what can we do on the private sector side to be able to help meet all of those challenges that they have and go find the money?
Awesome. Thank you. And what is your understanding of Moab Area Travel Council Advisory Board?
Okay, so my understanding, and again, any answer that I give is gonna be from an outsider's point of view. So it comes from definitely a place of inexperience and ignorance, but direct marketing organization to be able to promote Moab and everything that Moab has to offer. And specific to the advisory board is to be able to give input on, you know, marketing suggestions or be able to vote on initiatives to put up to the county commission for approval and vote.
Awesome. And what do you, what do you hope to bring to the Travel Council, to board? And what are you hoping to gain from your potential involvement on that board?
Awesome. What I have to bring? I, you know, I'm very service oriented. Again, you know, back part of my life, I want to be able to take my skills and experience in a very limited subset. I feel like we all kind of have a superpower. And being able to shift that into service and serving community and public sector. I don't have opinions necessarily. In my career, I've always been agnostic. So you tell me what you want and what the objectives are. And my job is to say, okay, here's what we need to go and find, and here's what we need to generate. These are all of the restrictions and the things that we're not willing to give up or sacrifice or put on the table to get it. Now let's figure out how we make it work within all of those parameters. That I'm, I have a weird, unique skill set at. And I feel like in a tourism community like this one, so many similarities with the one that I grew up. You've got to get the tourism dollars, but at the same time, it puts a tax on the infrastructure and in the environment and the culture and the personality of the place. And you don't want to impact all of those things. So I feel like my really weird skill set of how do we make all the things happen that we need to happen, but not sacrifice any of the objectives that we have in the things that are important to our culture and our values? I feel like that's kind of the area where I can slip in and be of assistance. I've managed marketing teams and PR teams and strategy teams and software engineering teams and being able to put all of those teams into place to be able to deliver on that strategy and those objectives. That's kind of what I hope to be able to bring. What I would like to take away is the public sector is a lot more complicated. So when you're given a mandate in the private sector, you get that mandate done and you're resourced. And there's no such thing as consensus or collaboration or a lot of cooperation necessarily with the business organizations that you work with. Whereas here, you've got a community and everyone needs to be heard and you need to develop consensus. And I would kind of like to get a peek into that side. Because on the economic development in the private sector side, what I would really hope to learn is how do you leverage those strategies to accomplish really big things to share with other communities? Because I feel like Moab is sort of on the mature side of the gateway amenities regions. Whereas where I come from, they're just on the starting point. So some of the things that they're so eager to run headlong into, you folks already know where the pain points are and where they're gonna hit like giant brick walls. So being able to work and kind of see that side of it would be really beneficial. But I think I just, I would love to serve and help.
Awesome. So this is a two-part question. Within the context of economic development in general and tourism in particular, what do you think are some of Moab and Grand County's best assets and attributes? And then on the flip side, biggest challenges or obstacles?
Oof, that's a lot, and I won't make it short. On the assets and the attributes, I mean, the big one is the obvious. I mean, come on, you look around and it is absolutely stunning. I hear people say all the time that Moab sells itself. And it does because it's gorgeous. It's iconic. I mean, it's different than just being nature and beauty and all of those things. I mean, so much iconic scenery that people grow up looking at. It's just a natural attraction here, and it's absolutely stunning and beautiful. But I feel like deeper than that, Moab has so much experience with all the different pain points and all of the different, you know, why is it important that we limit and we have things in place about short-term stays and will you, it's because you hit an affordable housing brick wall. So, you know, having that knowledge and that understanding, even for problems that don't have solutions yet, you are acutely aware of what the problems are. And that's a really great start. Like that sleeps and bounds ahead of a lot of gateway regions, which I think is like really cool. But yeah, I mean, so much to offer from a tourism standpoint and perspective and culture and history and all of the great things. I think on the flip side of that is what every gateway community understands is, you know, we've got a set amount of folks in a region. And then we have a huge influx of other folks that put a strain on the infrastructure and their seasonality. And, you know, all of the traditional challenges that you expect for a gateway community are tough. But I don't know, it's, it's pretty cool because it's also a huge economic opportunity. Because it's almost like most places or people have to market their products or their services to two to three million people. We get an influx of those two to three million people to be able to see how do we leverage to make you an asset and a resource to our community, not just a drain so that you can come and be extracted from the community.
Awesome. And what is your understanding of tourism taxes and how those monies are to be distributed and allocated?
So the TRT and then TRCC, my understanding, and again, from the outside standpoint, from a place of ignorance about how they're actually utilized and collected. But it's my understanding that we are four point two five-ish is where we are. And that it's kind of a floor and a ceiling model with the TRT. So taxes for transient stays, less than thirty days, collected by the state, I believe, and then distributed from the state. And then there's a floor and a ceiling. So the ceiling is, I think, a hundred percent of those funds can be used to promote the area. But then it's the third and two-thirds breakdown. So two-thirds have to be used for that specific purpose. But then a third can be reserved to offset the challenges to pay for the buildings.
Yeah. Thanks, John.
Be able to make bond payments, et cetera. And then anything that goes above that three percent, so like the one point two five doesn't get applied to the one-third, two-thirds, I believe. But still has to be used for the statutory outlined uses, but you just don't have to use the same percentage of mix. And then the TRCC is collected from the restaurant tax and from the rental car tax. And goes to the airport, the municipality, to be able to pay for some of those services. And how that gets spent, I probably have very little visibility into, but that's sort of my outside view.
Yeah, thank you. And then last, are you prepared to serve as an officer of the advisory board if nominated? Is there anything in your schedule that would not permit you to attend board meetings the seventh Tuesday of the month and any special meetings that may be called for a needed approval?
I would love to serve, and I have nothing in the way.
Great. All right. Thank you so much, Melissa.
Thank you so much. Nice to meet you. Nice to meet you.
Thanks, Melissa. All right, we'll go online now. Yeah, it's an open public meeting, so you're more than welcome to say. Rebecca or Howard, are either of you ready to go? I assume both of you are, Ben. Whoever turns the screen on first is gonna go. We're all just calling somebody. Howard, are you ready? Rebecca, are you ready?
Yeah, I'm good.
It's a game of chicken there. Prisoner's dilemma. Okay. You're good. Rebecca went first. Howard, you'll go after. It's all.
Ladies first.
All right, fine.
Always. Thanks, Howard. Okay, Rebecca, are you ready?
Yep.
Hey, can you tell us a little bit about yourself? What is your background?
So I am originally from Ogden, Utah. I lived there for a long time. So I'm used to a lot of snow where there's none here now. I've been in sales for as long as I can remember, my whole working career since I was like eighteen years old. So sales is kind of my passion. I moved to College Station, Texas for a year and a half. And then when COVID kind of hit, my mom's lived here for like seven years. So she was like, just come down here and save money and kind of get back on your feet. And a little did I know, it was kind of blessing in disguise because I'm actually like, we're thriving here and I love it here. And it's just so beautiful to have like these national parks in our backyard. But since working here, I started at City Market, which I kind of loved that. It was still like, I love working with people. But I worked there for a year and then I ended up work, starting to work at the front desk at Homewood Suites. And there I kind of like got in with all the tour guides and like really talking with guests. And I figured out like my passion was really to be in sales for hospitality. So I moved into a sales coordinator position. And from there, I kind of just moved up to sales manager and then dual sales manager. And I just really enjoy like working with the tour groups that come in, meeting all the different people from all over the globe. So yeah, I work for Vista Host Management, which is a major hotel management company. We we manage four hotels in the Moab area and major, other major tourist markets like Yellowstone and other casino, casino hotels and things like that. So that's pretty much my background.
Awesome. Thanks so much, Rebecca. And then second question, what is your understanding of the Moab Area Travel Council Advisory Board?
Um, so I kind of worked with Chanel a lot when she was on the Travel Council. She told me a lot what you guys did. So again, coming from an outside source, like Melissa said. So I guess you guys kind of like get suggestions, you vote on them and kind of present them and try to promote the tourism and strengthen the economic base. Just supporting like the recreation and tourism industry.
Awesome. And what do you hope to bring to the, to the board as well as what would you hope to gain from your potential involvement on the board?
Well, I want to be a part of it because I want to know what topics we're dealing with as a community. And being in Vista Host, where we have all these hotels, we have all over the US, we have so much to bring to Moab and where we have two Hilton properties. And then, I mean, we have the hoodoo in town also, so they're Hilton. Hilton has a lot of like national and international promoting from within. So like I have all these reports that we could utilize to just see like what kind of people travel to the area. We invest in reports like Agency Three Sixty and the Star Report. We can provide those and just gives us like free, you know, information on national and international travel. Also working with groups like hand in hand, like face to face every single day. I know what kind of people are starting to travel here, like right now, especially. I've been seeing a lot of like Japan, Japanese tour groups coming back to the area. So international travel. We're seeing a lot more of that. So just knowing like what's coming to the area. I think that that would be really beneficial to the Travel Council to know those type of things.
And then within the context of economic development in general and tourism in particular, what do you think are some of Moab and Grand County's best assets and attributes? And on the flip side, biggest challenges or obstacles?
Um, I would say probably like Melissa said, like our outdoor, we have two national parks in our backyard and we have a state park just right here. Like that's a huge asset for us to have. It brings so many people from all over the world that, that want to just go out and explore it. Challenges, I would say, like dealing with tour operators, like with a lot of elderly people too. Like we don't have any transportation in town. I don't know, I have a lot of ideas that just dealing with tour, tour groups and things like that, like I could definitely bring that to the table and start discussion on that. But transportation was one of the big things that I thought was a challenge in Moab.
Awesome. Thanks. Thanks for the response. What is, what is your understanding of tourism taxes and how those monies are to be distributed and allocated?
So tourism or transient room tax, it's charged to rooms thirty days or less, I believe. And I believe it goes to marketing and a lot of different things like, I mean, I'm still learning all this stuff, but like I, I think it goes to like, you know, promoting the area. Some first responders that we can need extra for because people want to base jump and hurt themselves and, you know, things like that.
Awesome. Thank you. And then lastly, are you prepared to serve as an officer of the advisory board if nominated? Is there anything in your schedule that would not permit you to attend board meetings the second Tuesday of the month and any special meetings that may be called for a needed approval?
I would love to, and I don't have anything going on.
Awesome. Thank you so much, Rebecca. Howard, are you ready? I think you're on mute.
That's unusual.
All right, we can hear you.
I can hear you, yes.
Okay, great. Why don't you tell us a little bit about yourself? What is your background?
Okay, I'll present myself as if nobody knows me. So I'm a Scottish immigrant. So my origins are from the United Kingdom and Scotland where I grew up. Went to university where I attended the Scottish Hotel School and obtained my Bachelor of Arts in Hotel and Catering Management. And then my journey began in about nineteen eighty-eight. I came to the United States on a J-one work visa to take a position at the World Trade Center and Windows on the World, which at that time was the busiest western in the world. And it was going to be my student job to go back to start my life in the UK. The road took a different turn and I ended up not taking that job in New York. And one road led to another. And I was in Atlanta, Georgia in nineteen eighty-eight where in ninety-eight, nine, I found this new hotel company, a bit of an upstart family business called the Ritz Carlton. And they took my journey in different directions. I started in Atlanta as a waiter. And I was quickly promoted into management. That's really, I'm nervous. And then I was transferred to Palm Beach, Florida to open a brand new Ritz. And then out to Aspen, Colorado with a similar intent as part of the opening management team. All my employees would disappear in April to this little place called Moab before the digital age. I said, what is Moab? Where is Moab? And in nineteen ninety-six, I came as a visitor. And boy, what an impression. One year later, I'd given up my corporate career and embarked on starting a small family business called the Red Rock Bakery and Cafe. And that began in nineteen eighty-eight in what is now an ATV rental place. And subsequently, a hair safari place. And I found a spot on Main Street twenty-five years ago that was a subway and took my experience from the Ritz Carlton and moved into that property where I've been now for twenty-five years. Went through a lot of stuff over those twenty-five years in this little town, watched it emerge from a post-mining economy into one of the most vibrant tourist economies on earth and become an iconic tourist destination. And my time here realized it was time to give back. So I served time on public boards, initially the Recreation District for about seven or eight years. And the big achievement there was the Rec Center, which I was actively involved, passionate about swimming. So I was passionate about that center. I shouldn't have been on that board because I wasn't a citizen of the United States. And so I duly resigned because it wasn't right, even though exceptions were made for me. I didn't feel that was correct and resigned, but I would still want to be involved. And in a county board that didn't require me being a citizen. So the Travel Council had an opening back in twenty-twelve. And I was accepted into that board and many of the existing board members knew exactly who I am. So there were secrets there. I served for nine years, then COVID hit. And COVID did many things to me personally. It was very hard in my business, those that were involved as a stakeholder, so to speak, in this town. And one of the big things that happened is my daughter came home as an adult now. And she'd always had this dream of running the family business for a second generation. And duly she did, but that was my job. So I was somewhat not unemployed or unemployable, but took a different role in things. And at the same time, I felt I needed a little break from things. And the Travel Council wasn't working for me at that particular time after nine years. And I resigned. After two years, I've had a new rebirth. I joined one of the most amazing hospitality companies on earth. That Elaine Gisler, who was the director for many years, quietly brought to this community, bringing us the best quality of guests. And I kind of took off my president of a company's hat, took off my general manager's hat and became a guest experience specialist. And after twenty-five years of living in this town, I realized after all of it, we deliver a product that is so sought. It's basically people's well-being. We have a responsibility as business owners or stakeholders to deliver that, whether it's a comfortable bed in a hotel or a nice meal or a nice bagel evening or in a coffee shop. Whatever it is, it's our duty to be like healthcare providers by making people feel better. And I've dedicated my time for twenty-five years in this town to that process. The new company seems to like me. They invite me to talk about Moab all the time because I've been here for twenty-five years and they consider me a booster. One of their top salespeople, and they spend thirty-three million dollars. This is Rocky Mountain here, by the way, if you, for those that don't know, the train company who spent thirty million dollars a year on marketing. for those that don't know, the train company who spent thirty million dollars a year on marketing. And they said, you're like Mr. Moab. So as I was invited up there to the retreat in Moab, they chose because in their words, we were an iconic tourist destination. And truly that was delivered over the sweat of the, everybody that's worked in this town, myself included. I've hired, I looked recently over two hundred people over twenty-five years to give them jobs, pay them as much as I possibly can and give them a good lifestyle. And I love giving, making people feel better more than anything else in my life as a caregiver. And to bring more people here, to bring them joy and bring them happiness, nothing gives me more passion than that.
Awesome. Thank you so much, Howard. Um, and what is your understanding of the Moab Area Travel Council Advisory Board?
Basically, I mean, I'll give the answers that were given before because they're all correct and all absolutely spot on. But really it's to give the investors a return on their investments. All the stakeholders that took their risks and came in here, particularly the small businesses, and I represent a restaurant. Our turnover is well under a million dollars a year. Um, we, I just, I was designed to be small, but I kind of represent those little businesses that maybe don't have the greatest marketing minds, but they have a great passion for what they do. And here's a travel council that helps them as a partner in this process. And they also help support that. And I say a stakeholder, um, I pay a TRCC tax through my business, which I'm about to submit every quarter. And that entitles me to some marketing in some regards. So I think perhaps my reconciliation with the board members is I, I understand that. Forgive me for being a business owner. It's, it's really difficult, you know, to, you know, do that. And I really believe that what the travel council has done, the time I was on board, the board was amazing. We were doing transformative things, bringing a quality visitor to our town, really focusing in on what best serves our community, understanding what all the variables are. And I think our hands were, the county did a phenomenal job doing what the travel councils do, better than any other travel council in the state of Utah, to be honest, winning a a national award that got very, wasn't heralded by many people, but that was no wonder achievement. That was major. Going up against some really mighty hitters with huge budgets to kind of do these things. And we were doing the right thing too, preserving, protecting, taking care of our environment, taking care of our special place that we call home. And the travel council was really on board in that. And things changed a little bit politically, I understand, but you know, the wind changes. And we're still in the wellbeing business. So my goal is to boost the sixty-six percent annual average occupancy that we have to maybe seventy. Maybe seventy-one even, let's shoot big, maybe eighty percent. Because each one of those guests represents spending and each of that spend helps counties out and in a massive way. So yes, we spend a privately generated public tax to bring the visitors to our town because we are special.
Awesome. And what do you hope to bring to the travel council and what are you hoping to gain from your potential involvement of the board?
Energy, enthusiasm, ideas, out of the box thinking and, and also really to, to look at again, where the taxes go beyond the marketing funds, the mitigation dollars, looking for perhaps leaks in the bucket that the money could be held by the county to pay for other things that are desperately needed. I sense there are, you know, housing is a massive issue. We're a hot, we're in the beehive state. I, I would love to see money from the not, from the non-tourism marketing money, the mitigation money we use to assist in that process, to make it meaningful and real. And I, I desperately look for employees every year and it's all that situation softens. We're undermining our product too. So, you know, we're not giving the best, you know, and we're in competition with a lot of places. I'm in a little town in the middle of nowhere, undisclosed, and they would desperately take a piece of the action we have and we do it so well. So I, I would bring, you know, just make sure that ship is sailing in the right direction and pure metrics. I would like to see the annual, average occupancy increase because that's more money for Grand County too. And the city of Moab, everybody wins in that situation and doing it better than everybody else.
Awesome. Um, and then within the context of economic development in general and tourism in particular, what do you think are some of Manhattan Grand County's best assets and attributes on the flip side, biggest challenges or obstacles?
Moab is probably the most unique place on this uni, in this universe, in my opinion, because it's where I've chosen to center myself. The best asset we have is the public lands. The greatest addition to our community that has the um, potential, of course, is the university, which is a fledgling economic development engine. Because it won't stop where it's at, that is going to grow. Um, we have a nuclear tailings site that could use, be a great site for something that would benefit all of the mechanisms in play. And it does take a long-term strategy to, to reach those goals. So there's many ideas. Or honestly, our, our biggest Achilles heel is the government's honest doesn't realize how hard it is to be a worker in the beehive state and own a business and how hard it is to find good employees and how frustrating it is to have to hire people maybe you wouldn't hire in a, in a more fluid situation. And because our guests don't receive the best service we can possibly give them, it's average at best. And each of us does our own, the bakery is proud of, you know, empowering and giving great service, but I can't serve everybody. I mean, so it takes a team effort, it takes a lot of collaboration between all the agencies involved, which is extremely complicated. But I believe that if with a little collaboration, we can do a lot. And Moab may be small in number and really in the grand scale population wise, we don't account to very much, but boy, we have a lot to offer. The reason I stay in Moab is the people that we have. If we had more workers, we'd be in much better shape. If they had somewhere to live, I've been a provider for housing my entire life in this town. I provided housing for three of my employees as a family business. And now I'm offering housing for workforce um, of any description to help out because I am, you know, a beneficiary of that too. If I can secure people, people to live here, let them have a dream to live in this community too somehow for the future. Let them, you know, be what I do, the next me, I don't know, next generation.
Um, and then so we got two more questions if we, if, if there's anything, uh, uh, can we, if we can try to give it just a little bit brief, I appreciate the enthusiasm, Howard. Uh, what is your standing? No, you're fine. What is your understanding of tourism taxes and how those monies are to be distributed and allocated?
Okay, um, four point two five percent is the allocated TRT tax. Um, the TRCC tax is levied at one percent on restaurants. And the only other business entity that collects that tax is as motorized vehicle rentals under thirty days. That money has to be used in accordance with the state code, which is very specific on its use. Thirty-seven percent is held back for economic development and tourism and recreation. So that's it.
Awesome. Uh, lastly, are you prepared to serve as an officer of the advisory board if nominated? Is there anything in your schedule that would not permit you to attend board meetings the second Tuesday of the month and any special meetings that may be called for a needed approval?
Fortunately, I told the train that they couldn't come in on Tuesdays. So if I do take my seasonal position back, I am perfectly able to attend every meeting this year. And any for the further term.
Awesome. Thank you so much for taking.
Thank you. Don't mind if I sit in and listen.
Not at all. It's a public meeting.
Thank you.
Um, all right, I'm gonna pull up the agenda here, share that again, sort of the online and see. Um, I, I checked, so it'll just all be public. Uh, we can't have a closed session for this.
You sure?
I, I double check for Stephen and Mallory.
On, on the copy agenda, it doesn't, it doesn't include a standing item, a closed session if needed.
Yeah.
Is that on the commissioner, on the commissioner one, we always have a standing closed session needed. So if anything arises within the meeting, there's public notice that we may go into closed session.
We don't do that habitually for this board. So that's a change we can make in the future, but either way, that's not how we'll proceed for today. So the next, the next agenda item is consideration and nomination of applicants to fill travel council advisory board positions that expired December thirty-first, twenty-second. And I'll start just reminding kind of what uh, the state code requires us to have in terms of board constitution, who's leaving and who we have here today to consider. So um, again, we have uh, Jason Taylor, um, who is representing a TRCCA paying business with Kingland's Jeep Rentals via the current OHB side of things. Daniel Leverage is leaving, representing a hotel paying TRT. Uh, Jenny Gleason's position expired, uh, does not pay TRT or TRCCA, also reapplying for that position. Um, as it stands, we currently have um, Brian representing a TRT paying business, Red Cliffs, Alex representing a TRCCA paying restaurant in ninety-eight. Uh, Lacy fulfilling a standing position for the chamber and Sharon filling a non-TRCCA or TRT paying position. State code requires that we have a majority of TRCCA or TRT paying on representatives, doesn't dictate what that balance has to look like necessarily. Um, but uh, at the end of last year, we had two lodging partners paying TRT, one TRCCA restaurant and one TRCCA kind of outfitter, um, car OHB rental. Um, so that, that being um, said, I'll open, well, I guess who we have to actually consider. Um, we have the folks that applied today. So that's Melissa. Uh, who's not representing a TRCCA or TRT paying business, Rebecca, who's representing a TRT paying lodging partner. Howard, who's representing a restaurant, um, impacted by TRCCA with, with Red Rock. Um, and then we also have Lori McFarland who applied, um, and interviewed last time, representing a TRCCA paying uh, OHB rental business in High Point Hummer. And Jenny who applied and interviewed last time, representing a non-TRCCA or TRT paying business. And with that, I'll open the floor to the boards.
Can I ask that question?
Yeah.
So, so Jeremy Day, do we know?
Because he didn't show up or interview, he's ineligible. Uh, if, if, if the board wanted.
Candace.
Candace actually withdrew. Um, apologies for that.
Okay. And we haven't heard from Jeremy if there's.
Did we hear any?
A conflict.
I had talked to him on the phone, um, initially and I said he was planning to show up.
Emily Rachel's tried numerous times.
Okay.
We sent out phone calls this week and last, so.
I would like to make the first motion.
Okay.
I would like to make the motion that we um, approve Jenny Gleason to be reinstated onto the travel council or the Moab Area Travel Council Board.
Okay. So I can, okay, we got a motion by Sharon, uh, seconded by Alex to nominate Jenny to the travel council board. Reappointed. Uh, either can vote, all favor.
Hi.
All right, passes unanimously. Um, uh, that does have to go to the county commission to be approved. So Jenny is still going to be a citizen on this board today.
Yeah.
Um, awesome. Sharon.
I would like to nominate or I would like to make the motion to approve the Lori McFarland as a member of the Moab Area Travel Council as a TRCCA via the car and OHB rental business to kind of replace the Jason Taylor position.
Okay, I'll second one. Uh, motion made by Sharon, seconded by Brian to nominate Lori McFarland to the travel council advisory board. All in paper.
Hi.
Hi.
Uh, passes unanimously. I still have one, one vacant position, um, that needs to be TRT or TRCCA. Place of Daniel's position.
So in the violet, is it, is it? Does it say whether it has to be TRT or TRCCA or?
The state code doesn't, doesn't discriminate. It just need to have a TRT or TRCCA paying ever. Uh, the way that we've done it in the past is just kind of one for one replacements to have that balance, but that's kind of a subjective interpretation by the board members.
So Melissa's now.
For, yeah, so in order for Melissa, Melissa would be on the roster basically. So she's applied, she's interviewed. If there was a vacancy um, for a non-tax and paying board member, then uh, the board can make a motion at a future meeting to fill that position. But in order to be compliant with state law, we need to have a TRCCA or TRT paying representative.
In order to get this, our board filled, which we need, I think it's very important to have a full board. Um, I will nominate Howard Trenton to uh, take the final position onboard.
Okay, motion made by Sharon. Seconded by Lacy. Any discussion? Awesome. Uh, I would pay a vote. All in favor.
I think.
All right, passes unanimously. Um, so uh, in sum, the board has nominated uh, Jenny Gleason to be reappointed to her position. Um, uh, Lori McFarland to fill uh, Jason Taylor's uh, expired position and Howard Trenton home to, to round that out. Um, to comply with the code. So we'll take that to the county commission at their next meeting next week. Thank you, everybody. Thank you, everybody for taking the time to interview and show up. And of course, welcome to stay on the meeting for the rest um, of today's meeting. Uh, next agenda item, we've got uh, consideration and nomination of applicants. We are consideration and approval of two members to the ad hoc special and community event grants twenty-twenty-three evaluation committee. Um, so context on this is obviously this board has been doing special event grants for years. Um, we've been trying to improve that process, make it take less time from the entire committee, be a little bit more rigorous and tied to bricks and similar to the grant programs that we've been creating um, on the kind of economic diversification side, star grants. So at the last commission meeting, um, we revised the program or the commission, we asked the commission, the commission voted affirmatively to amend those program guidelines, um, so that we have a ad hoc committee made up of two travel council board members, two economic development board members and one county commission liaison um, to review those um, applications. Um, hopefully trying to move quickly, those have, we've already received those applications this past fall. Um, so it would be for the twenty-twenty-three year. Um, so I don't, I seem, do we need to actually vote on this or can it people volunteer and?
My, my understanding is you're, you're within this body selecting those two individuals. It's for an ad, uh, ad hoc group. And that's an important distinction, right? But it's whatever the body.
Does it need to be like a motion on it?
I, that's the cleanest way to do it is a motion because you're acting on half the body selection, those two individuals.
Um, before you do any motioning, is anybody interested in that?
Can I ask a question real quick though?
Yeah.
Do we still have our other committees, like the marketing committee? I'm just curious, are it still like on a marketing committee?
I, I don't know if any of those were formally created or disbanded. Just happen to be working on them. So I, I would say that under future agenda items, if there's subcommittee work that we want to more intentionally do outside of this body, then let's create those.
And this ad hoc committee is for applications that you have already received.
Yeah, so we opened this in August. It was kind of a similar timeline where we opened it in the, in the fall and we go through the budget process. And then when the budget is approved and real in, in the budget year, then we go through and actually get those monies paid out. Uh, in the past, it was a bit more informal and the travel council would just kind of make the recommendation and then it would just happen.
Yeah.
We're just trying to make sure that we're all aboard and that A, we have a clear recommended body and process and guidelines and applications. So it's clean for everybody. And that, uh, it takes a little less time in this general. We had a handful of like ad hoc meetings for the travel council board this last year that I think we want to get away from. So yeah, is anybody interested?
I bring snacks. So can I just say one thing?
Yeah.
Red Cliffs is one of those who was applied, so I feel like I cannot. So that would not be fair. So.
Okay.
Cut myself out.
How long, I mean, what kind of a time?
Ben just ran away, but it would be, it would be like one meeting.
One meeting.
Um, where you look at all of the, you know.
Kind of like what we used to do.
Yeah, in one session, uh, in a smaller group, you look at all of the applicants and, and make basically funding recommendation to the commission. The commission will see all of the applications. Um, I think that was one distinction we wanted to make clear is that it's not like we, we received these things and then these go away and we only put the ones we, that we want to see. Kind of just basically mirroring how the star grant program went. We had a balanced kind of approach, looking at the grants, looking at our rubric, scoring it. Um, all in kind of one official place and then bringing that to the commission for a fun.
And this is a one-time, just.
Be a one-time. No, so, so for example, we'll do it, okay, so Lacy.
As long as it's not a bunch of more meetings.
No. I think the intention is, is that this is for the twenty-twenty-three program year, we've already received all the.
Although do they already know when they're having this meeting?
Uh, that has not been scheduled yet.
Okay.
Because we need, we still need to get the economic development board represented.
Okay, because I'm out of town the end of.
Yeah, so there's, we haven't scheduled it yet. We'd make it work, you're scheduled. Um, so I, I'd entertain a motion to uh, make that concrete. I guess I'd entertain a motion to nominate for the travel council board to nominate Sharon and Lacy um, to the ad hoc special community event grants evaluation.
Second one. You make a motion.
I didn't. I was entertaining.
Yeah, I make a motion to um, Yeah, I make a motion to have these two lovely young ladies volunteer for the. The permit process.
Cool. Second it. All right. Motion made by Brian, seconded by Alex, all in favor. I passing out a some. Awesome. Thank you all so much for your continued dedication and service. Um, okay, at the beginning, next next board, um, agenda item is review of travel council advisory board bylaws. As it is the first meeting of the year, it's required that we go over these, make sure that there's no hiccups or anything that we shouldn't consider. We don't have to read through it line by line. I think, starting with, does anybody have anything that they want to flag? We consider going forward. Any questions? I'm also happy to ask him. Yeah.
Seems trivial, but the just the literature was saying that the county council and its county technician.
Can you make a note of potential changes to the bylaws? Bylaws for the job.
Oh, do we already miss who's on my committee?
Yes.
Yeah, no one volunteered, so you don't get anyone.
Maybe just snacks for four. I don't know.
Yeah, well, Rachel's taking that. I'm just asking, Ben, he's probably make this note. On in the bylaws, Alex is making a note that it refers to the county as a council rather than a commission.
Got it.
Yeah, so that's.
So you talk to me about that.
Um. Any anything else super flagged? I mean, I can just skim through it really quickly, just so we see what's in there.
Everything's good.
I'll just, I'll just pull it up so we can at least remember the set. I'll just read the section headers. And go through it quickly. So it goes over purpose. And then, so. I'm not going to read this out, but I'll say purposely, well, space for, you may as soon as in this, maybe a bit more. Can everybody hear us? It seemed like Zoom quit for just a minute there online.
Well, it seems like I've gotten permanently, but now it's kind of bad. I've been kicked out.
Okay, Hannah can hear us. Okay. Oh, maybe I have to readmit participants.
All right.
You might have to. You might have to read you in the meeting.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, I'll reshare. Right, I'll I'll let you keep it that up. Any any concerns with the purpose section? Anything that you would want to change? Right. Uh, compliance, just basically saying that we're complying with county and state statutes.
Yeah, same thing there, county, county commission.
Yeah.
I guess I've always been under the impression that the bylaws were, I didn't know that we could have a say in the bylaws.
Well, the commission has to make any changes.
Right.
This is basically like flagging.
Gotcha.
The board can't change their bylaws.
Recommending the chamber.
Got it.
Yeah. So you you could, you could say that, I mean, you don't have to even make a motion. We would just say like, we'll go redline this.
Gotcha. Okay.
Bring it back in the commission.
I see.
Any any concerns? Um, one thing that I'm thinking of is just because we're appointing four, three at the same time. Um, the commission will make a decision on what the timeline is. And so if we all do four years, we're gonna have three expiring at the same time. I might kind of defer to the administration's office recommendation of maybe staggering that a little bit so that we don't have three all expiring at the same time in the future. And then the only thing here is that, Lacy, I don't, it seemed that you have, it has to actually have some appointment. I don't know if, I've obviously, we've just been continuing to have you as the representative, but I don't know if y'all, if your board needs to actually have an official vote appointing you every. I don't know if there needs to be a four year period or how that works, but just something to flag that I might bring up with. Benefit you can flag it really quickly for me to confirm and that might be just an action the chamber has to take.
Yeah.
The only other thing on that membership thing, you know, like how we always have a chamber come that one time before me, it was. Brought up that possibly same like my position would be.
The C N H A.
A C N H A position.
Interesting, just like standard.
Yeah, but I mean, this was like before I even became on the board. I heard about it out of a roundabout way. Oh, did they finally put that in? And I'm like, no.
It's something we could definitely.
Yeah.
I'll I'll make it, Ben, if you just make a note of that, like investigate.
Is your position now like any earmarked whatsoever?
Just a non TRT TRCC paying vendor, and that would be compliant with state code as well.
Right.
He did that. That is be our flavor of how we're doing it. Um, we'll talk about our schedule in a minute, but in our bylaws, it says that this is our schedule. Is there, were there any concerns this year?
There's just a lot of movies last year.
Yeah. At least one regular. Um. Complying with open public meeting notice, annual notice of regular public meetings that's happened already at the county. Quorum is ba- quorum is based off of active on membership. Well, it actually doesn't say, it doesn't stay active membership in here. Um, so that might be something we want to actually get affirmatively written in there. That's the interpretation of the county. So if Sharon couldn't have made it today, and it was just the three of you, it would be the, that would be quorum based off the four active members, but. Could alternatively be interpreted as seven is still the membership three is not a quorum, which would have been an issue. So maybe just clear that up. We don't, I, this two thirds majority, I don't, I don't, there's nothing that requires a two thirds majority.
Yeah.
So I think we should. Strike that, Ben, if you want to just note that.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Just based on what happened before with you guys doing interviews out loud in person, is this where you would put in the closed thing in the bylaws or is that?
No, that would just be, we'd have to put it on the agenda. Because that. No, that's a good, it's a good clarification. Thanks again. Um. Just recording minutes with the following substance. There you go, minutes of a closed meeting shall conform to state law. Using Robert's rules. Uh, following state of my need agendas done twenty four hours ahead at least. Says that the, it's part of the chairman's responsibility to get on the agenda. That's something I think when we have a full board, I'd like to get a chair and vice chair. So we're, so we're all clean on that side of things. I'm always happy to step in like today, but it could be helpful for me. It also says, we, this isn't actually, this is not necessarily state law. We, and and we can just adjourn the meeting without a motion, so we can strike that as well. But if it's in our bylaws, then they have to do that. This this seems like it makes sense. This is the role of the chairman, chair, maybe changes it's like just the chair, get rid of the man part.
If in the bottom paragraph, it says chair.
Yeah. Objections to the to the role.
This one.
Yeah, you can have advice. Now it clarifies that. These are the duties of the vice is basically sub sub chair, chair, chair on the bench. Yeah. Uh, dues as the board members. Excepted, I guess you have to just accept committee assignments. Sorry. Uh, boy, conflicts of interest, give advice to the director, establish marketing strategies. It all seems aligned. Making sure that that boards don't actually try to tell our office what to do, which I don't think we've had any issues. Except for calling Robert to drop off.
To change the price of the showers.
There you go. Yeah, there you go. And. Here's a, this is a attendance note, board member that is absent for in three regularly scheduled meetings in a year without excuse would be automatically dismissed. I don't think we've had any issues with that.
We did. We actually, I think, since I've been on it one.
That's happened. So I I think that's it's better, honestly, for me that it's automatic because you could always excuse them. Like that's once he deaths versus someone who just stopped showing up and you don't have to be motion. Uh, and then this, honestly, I don't find all that necessary, but I think it's fine. Subcommittee like excuse clause. Do we need it? Do we not need it? I don't. Take it out, it's clean, but it doesn't matter. I think I just leave it in because it doesn't, it's not going to change anything. Um, we can change this. I think electronic participation in in meetings has changed considerable amount. So I think we just clean that to make it. There's no notice. You don't need to make a notice. And then this, this is saying that you have to be here for three quarters of the scheduled meeting to constitute a presence. Does that matter? Does that feel valuable?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's not. So I've been a few times, someone's had to leave early.
Do we need to, do we need to make that explicit? I'd almost strike it first.
Yeah.
Okay, let's consider. Straightforward. Same idea. There is, as a note, there isn't, there is an opportunity for board members to travel on behalf of the travel council and be reimbursed for the travel expenditures out of the county budget. That is what it is. We haven't utilized that, but I can imagine it happening for any conference or something like that, like in chair.
Oh, can you scroll up?
Yep.
Okay, so we were.
And then maybe probably have to clarify economic development department as well. And we're speaking of not the board, but the department. Okay. This is gonna governing the list start as expenditures process. I would just probably run it by our, the commission administration, make sure it's what it should be, but it seems like in alignment. Sounds like the but this body can suspend the bylaws for something, for some unnecessary action, but can't change it unless county commission changes it. And that's everything.
Good.
Any concerns? Okay.
We can put in a required party at the end of the year.
Say it again, required party. Honestly, a great idea.
But not stale donuts.
Stale donuts from the leadership.
Be reimbursed for your travel expenses.
Go to next, next week I have to go to junction, but not till on Wednesday.
You go represent travel council at.
All right, we've got review of the child council advisory board meeting schedule. It's the second Tuesday. This is standard, no July meeting.
Next month is on Valentine's Day.
Well, we will have to have that.
We'll have to get some cart pickies or something.
It will bring, we'll bring a Valentine making kit as well. And any any questions, discussion, changes to this? Can always call a special meeting if one of these does not fit anybody's schedule or if there's a holiday or or any other foreseen issues. Any any concerns of moving on to next agenda? Okay. Uh, let's go right into review of economic development department, twenty twenty three towards the market and programs to be created and or implemented. Stop sharing for just a second. I just created just a, I love this summary doc. What we started, we have love on the line that's gonna kind of help guide part of this conversation. Um, this is not an exhaust, today is not going to be an exhaustive conversation about everything that we're working on this year, but but kind of like the big high level. Marketing priorities that we are hashing out with love. At a high level, we have a, and we've completed the the solicitation process last year. So we just need to extend the contract with them before we can pay them anything for this year. So we're working on that just for reference. But just as a high level, and then I'll hand it over to them. Main, the main programs that are funded for this year is we have a fly market campaign, just under half a million dollars, half of which is from TRT, half of which is from the state grant program. We do currently have that already planned out, media plan and is live. And and that is right now focused for January through March of this year and basically the same campaign that we are already running just in this year, new budget year. There's the, this kind of what ended up being called the additional steady drip marketing on priority. So it's a hundred thousand dollars from TRT. We haven't flushed that out. The initial thought was, let's extend this drive market campaign strategically throughout the year. Maybe not necessarily continuous, but key booking windows and kind of deferred to love's advice on how that should be expended and targeted. And then we have a hundred thousand for a digital, or I guess it is not concerned with the time bench visitor education campaign. Building off what we learned last year, in which we spent twice that, but also the program was twice as new. And so hoping that, again, with a little bit less money prioritizing high value placement. So that's kind of the big picture. And I think that wanting to to discuss all of that in tandem for the year. And then afterwards, I'll kind of touch on some of the other programs that we're working on that we can kind of bring up at future meetings for further discussion. And I hand it over to Hannah and Mark, unless there's any initial conversations or questions from board members on on these. Cool. All right, Hannah and Mark, you got the floor.
Awesome. So August, did you want me to share just as a visual to remind everyone what the fly market looks like?
Sure, yeah, I just stopped sharing my screen.
Okay, awesome. I just need access to that. But what August was just alluding to, again, in twenty twenty two, during the fall, we launched two campaigns, right? So we had around three hundred fifty nine thousand dollars looking at drive market. So that was Salt Lake and some outside of the state markets, you know, Denver, Boise, Phoenix. That one wrapped up at the end of December, so we're working on that report for you. Just as, you know, a sideline, we had Expedia as part of that program. And one of the things with that program that we negotiated was for them to provide some dollars back based on bookings. And so they selected. A place to donate and is around thirteen thousand five hundred dollars to give back. And so for with Expedia, we are also able to track, obviously, return on ad spend. And so we were looking at around three thousand hotel. You know, bookings there, you know, equating to about eleven return on ad spend. And so that was just something that we got yesterday as news, but you know, in the next couple of weeks, we'll look at the whole program and provide kind of hotel revenue and and how markets did and creative performance. Along with that, though, as August mentioned, we did have a fly campaign, so a pretty robust campaign. And so that was, you know, from October through December, and we're just continuing that through March. And so what that looks like, just as a reminder, again, what we were focusing on here is really capturing, you know, those flying markets, including Salt Lake. We want to promote the the flights into Moab. So again, reminding people about Moab, you know, coming for, you know, the off season, all of the benefits there. You know, we're testing out different creative across our different pillars. But we also wanted to make sure that we continue to focus on, you know, capturing people while they were searching for other parks and other travel destinations. So again, from from kind of looking at the full funnel, search is really where we want to capture those people. So we were bidding on national park terms, Moab terms, some competitive terms. Something that allows us to tie back our marketing efforts to hotel revenue outside of, say, a trip advisor or an Expedia is our partner's sojourn. And so they are targeting people with display and video. And then we have, you know, a connected TV buy. Again, you guys saw all of this. This is really where we're hitting people with that beautiful visual fifteen second, thirty second spots on their living room screen. So all of these things are working together. We're looking at, you know, things to do in January is really looking at optimizations. Where can we see the best markets reacting? Where can we see the creative messaging performing? Right now, we're. Right now, we're looking at creating some different CTAs for our display banners to be a little bit more. So we're, we're formulating some of those. We're right now, we're talking about flights, but we really want to talk about, hey, book now. These are the reasons why. So that is what we have, you know, when we look at those funds that carried over, we have a really robust January, February and March. Which is really nice because usually year over year, um, we look at really March as our starting point of a lot of messaging. So with that, with that, um, you know, we are looking at those additional kind of funds that August mentioned. One of them being is how do we continue kind of that drive market? Because what we're seeing in, in travel trend data, of course, everyone's aware of that with economic implications and inflation and, and just kind of the hecticness of traveling. We do think that the drive market, obviously Salt Lake is the top drive market right now for our campaign. We also are targeting, you know, Denver, Colorado Springs, Boise, Idaho, Vegas. And we can kind of see how these markets are doing with, with the interactions with our messaging. Um, but we are seeing the travel trends are showing that, hey, you know, we want to support those flyers who are coming here no matter what. But we also want to make sure that we're hitting those low hanging fruit audiences that are looking to drive to Moab for a long weekend. Um, we also know that there are a lot of remote workers still. And so that's something that we're looking at with the younger audiences is people coming down and spending that longer stay, um, because they're able to work remotely. So when it comes to the hundred K to continue the drive market, we did just want to open up in case, you know, there was any um, direction from, from this council. On, on maybe timing of this, um, you know, because we have a very strong fly campaign for the next three months. And this is a smaller budget. Um, we wanted just to kind of see any feedback. If you guys had any on, hey. You know, we're seeing this in the market. I think we need to continue to hit the drive markets now, or we feel like we can maybe stagger that to more of a March date. When um, we can look at kind of the top markets and make sure that, that we're really allocating that budget properly. So just wanted to pause there in case there was any kind of real uh, strong feelings about that timing. What we'll do with this, with this budget in any direction in addition to August and Melissa is that we'll look at the travel trends. We'll work at, we'll look at market research, our audiences, you know, think of different channels. Um, one thing that was mentioned here that um, I just want to reiterate is that we look at all media channels. And so a lot of this is driven by digital, uh, just because it's really agile. We can track it back to ROI and our main KPIs. But we know also the power of TV, of billboards on a certain route coming in and out of Moab and, and destination. So um, in the drive campaign that we had this past fall, if you guys remember, we had TV, we had billboards, transit. We had print programs and digital. So we were looking at all of those things. Um, but just wanted to take a second. If you guys had any questions or any feedback until we get to time entry.
No, I think maybe my only, my only, you know, thinking is just wanting to make sure that with the budget that we have um, allocated. Just that we have this, you know, besides the fact that they're kind of, you know, categorized in these different ways. That collectively throughout the whole year, that it's a cohesive, touches all the markets and the times of the year and the strategies. That we want, um, you know, for time entry, it's gonna be in this next couple of months. It's gonna be heavy because it's trying to remind people that it's happening. It's also fly market. That leaves a lot of the year to have a hundred thousand for this, you know, drive market focused. Be kind of spread a little thin. So I just wanted, like, I think it's not, for me, it's not um, out of the question to think about the timing of the fly market spend. And distributing that throughout the year as well. Um, I know one of the concerns there could be the grant timing, but I believe we have. Um, we're, we're not, we don't have to finish that before this fiscal year. I think we have a second fiscal year to spend that money. So we could distribute that throughout the year. That would be the main thing I want to serve the board is like, we have this, this bucket of, of marketing. Um, funds and it's currently planned for these kind of places, but just I want to make sure that we're being intentional about. Are we covering all of the year that the money that we have? And hearing any thoughts from the board or liaisons or, yeah.
Yep.
Kayla, you've unmuted. Um, can't hear you.
How about, how about?
Yeah, nice. Yep.
Um, one question, uh, you mentioned that there are part of the, part of the people that may be picking up on this are remote workers. And I'm just wondering if there's any content that is specific to them.
Great question. So we didn't focus specifically on content for them because they are such a um, an audience that we can't specifically identify. To then target. Um, on, on a lot of our travel trends, we're just seeing that demographically, you know, those folks who are willing to kind of go on trips for, you know, two or three weeks at a time remotely. Um, or, you know, millennials and Ja- Gen Z. So from a demographic standpoint, we can target those folks. Um, but no, we don't have specific messaging based on that. We're just kind of showcasing, we are hitting that demographic. And in social, we can pull out, maybe test that. That's a great, that's a great thought. We've, we've brought this up a couple of times, you know, kind of throughout COVID. And I haven't had a, a destination do specific content for remote workers, um, but it is a good idea from like a native article perspective. Uh, but just to answer your question, no, we don't have specific creative for that.
Okay. Well, I asked because I can see how it would work for that less than a month category. But um, it would be interesting to think a little bit more about how this dovetails with economic resilience and diversification goals. And for folks that are staying longer, if it actually returns money to the businesses that are paying the tourist taxes. And whether or not their competition with other workers is, is worth it. So. But it sounds like it's you, you're, since you're not specifically targeting, it's not enough of an issue to address at this point.
Right. You know, this is just part of our travel trends. When we're seeing people willing to fly and spend that money, they usually are remote workers. They're spending a longer time. So we're not saying that it's a key audience for us to, for us to go after. Because we know that those people also stay at Airbnb or family or things like that. And so we want to be cognizant of what type of travelers we're, we are attracting.
Okay, great. Thanks.
So I think I brought this up last time. It's just related to kind of what you said, but the fly market, the fact that we don't have flights coming in and out of here till the beginning of March, March ninth. To Salt Lake at all, and you can't even book them until after March ninth. I just didn't know. Spreading the marketing money to other envi- uh, uh, environs or whatever you say.
Yeah.
Versus the Salt Lake because it's just not even doable right now.
Yeah.
Through Denver. I mean, you can't get here.
Right. Yeah, we brought this up at the last meeting, I think. Um, and what, what was the update kind of in terms of how y'all were thinking about addressing that?
Yeah. So obviously Salt Lake is the one market that kind of overlaps within these two efforts. Because we want to kind of zoom out and obviously figure out which ways those audiences can come down. And obviously it being one of your biggest markets, we wanted to budget that appropriately. Um, on the creative, that's why we're switching it to more of just like a book now or more generic kind of CTA. And so technically it does still work. It would be almost a similar message as the drive. But to that point, if we're looking holistically, um, you know, for the fly market, we could simply remove Salt Lake entirely. I think that, that could be a discussion right now because um, you know, obviously Salt Lake's one of the main markets, but Denver is doing really well too. And if we want to kind of shift the, the remaining impressions, which are a lot, to really focus on out of state. Um, this would be the place to do it.
Saying something along the lines of, okay, we have whatever of, of the markets. Because the markets, the, the, the destination market, or excuse me, the origin markets we're looking at on the flight campaign. There's, there's, it's, it's hub and spoke out of Salt Lake and Denver, right? So out of Denver, it's Chicago. Is there any other that's coming out of Denver that kind of that like makes the most sense? I mean, I guess people can fly however they want.
The main markets that we're focusing on, and some of this is a little bit national, based on like search keywords and things like that. But it's Denver, LA, Salt Lake, Chicago.
Yeah, okay. Those are kind of the main markets.
Mm-hmm.
Basically LA and Salt Lake. I guess LA.
Oh, it could.
So yeah, maybe just present the, the line by CTA, that's all that.
Yeah. Hey, August.
Yeah.
I don't know if I'm the only one having a hard time hearing you, but you're kind of, you might, you might be far away from the speaker.
I'm leaning back a little too much.
Oh, sorry, buddy. Thanks.
Um, so I mean, that would, that would seem like something that we can take as feedback from this meeting is let's, let's distribute that Salt Lake based.
Mm-hmm.
Fly market messaging and either replace it with drive market oriented things or, or just do it. Push it until after that Salt Lake flight comes back.
Yeah.
In March. In March?
They start flying out March ninth, so you can start booking.
For March, after March nine.
March nine, from Delta, on Delta only from Salt Lake.
And, and the CCA currently is, Mark, correct me if I'm wrong, but like flights daily.
Flight driving daily, right?
So it's just kind of letting you know. I understand the implication, but if they can plan, I think for us, it's more of. Now LA, Chicago and Denver, those are pretty big areas, right? And so we're really behaviorally targeting, you know, the people that we think will be interested in Moab. Having said that, if we remove Salt Lake entirely, it would give a little bit more impact to kind of those bigger markets. Uh, was all, which is always a benefit if we want to kind of get that in their mind with this bigger budget. And then we have that drive incremental funding, um, and then that time entry as well. So we can think about it too. I don't, we don't have to decide right now if you guys want to.
Yeah, Brad, I just have a question. What is, um, is our marketing program different, say, from what we would send out in August versus what we would send out in January? The, in terms of like what the actual creative is. I think right now the, so the creative that we're placing is what we presented kind of in that fall to have a mix of uh, the three. Alls is like the out, kind of outdoor recreation verticals, the arts, culture vertical, and the kind of like a science-based responsible recreation vertical. But I don't know if we have like seasonally, like, okay, here's like snow on the rocks. Is that kind of like what you're?
Yeah, I mean, I just think that, I mean, like, one of the things that we struggle with all the time is people that are like, well, what am I gonna do in the winter?
Right.
You know, and if we want, you know, economic diversification, how are we getting people here in the, in the shoulder seasons? We really need them.
Yeah.
As opposed to trying to cram them into the six months that we're all like, I don't have anybody to even serve you at this.
Exactly. So. So I think, I think that question, that would be another thing I'd like to maybe talk about is, is right now we're very heavy in the next three months. Um, that's, it is our, it is our kind of shoulder season, off season. It's a prime booking window for the whole year. Um, we don't have, I mean, there's, there's, there are called, uh, in the creative, there's called actions that are like talking about off season and getting off and beating path. And all that kind of stuff. Um, I'm, I'm curious what kind of the sentiment would be like, what? I mean, this is something that we'd like to go through our like robust planning process to figure out, okay, these are the actual windows we're trying to like bring up to X percent or whatever. But to me, you know, obviously these first three months, the summer has been falling flat with no international. And then kind of the end of the year being kind of the focus and leaving kind of the spring and fall to just the natural flow of that and get people. Um, and that's, so my instinct would be like, that's book, like to focus on those three windows, whether it's marketing funding. And I don't, I, but I, you know, I don't, I'm not super, I'm not expert on booking windows and all of that. So I don't, I don't know, I'd be defer to love in terms of like, if that's when we're trying to boost. Visitation and, and you know, preseason, summertime, and then kind of like the tail end of the season.
Yeah.
Be in market with the actual messaging. Yeah.
I mean, like for those, I mean, April, May, beginning part of June, we don't need help. We're sold out.
Yeah.
You know, September, October, beginning part of November, don't need help. I need help the end of November, all of December, January.
Yeah. And.
The tail part of, the tail part of February after Valentine's is actually good, but the first two weeks for us of these are, are not so good.
So uh, a few years ago, we did a winter in Moab campaign. What happened is uh, a lot of businesses came to us and say, why you guys promoting winter in Moab? We want a break. We saw that we have a few years ago, they didn't. It was a beautiful campaign, but most of them say, hey, I want a break. Why you're promoting more? So it starts to back up. We have a lot of probably like mainstream businesses and that or. Yeah.
Well, I mean, like it's, it's interesting because ABC four, they just did their live remote from Hulu right before Christmas.
Mm-hmm.
And you know, part of that was designed to bring business here over the winter and they struggled to find businesses.
We started, we started this winter in Moab, uh, we started this uh, campaign. Thank you to the home streets, home streets, we just started winter with winter in Moab. And then we partnership with winter, I mean, with home sweet. And then they have a lot of hotel businesses and another restaurant businesses that they're coming as a partner. They want to promote that. But it was a lot of things from the businesses and the community, why you guys are doing that.
So, so I think, I think that. I think we need to nail down through this body and through planning is like, where are the gates? Like clearly these, this week, last week, like nothing is open. And I don't think anybody, I mean, speaking to hospitalities, like this is like the reset time that you do remodels like.
There are a fair amount of people walking those streets.
Right. So that's, but that's something we need to figure out. Like, how do we balance?
It's been busy. Yeah, there's, there's a lot of drive through traffic for sure.
Correct.
Thing change, maybe, I don't know, maybe, I don't know, that business will be more pro winter in Moab. I don't know.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We can try. And see what's the.
That could even just be maybe, that kind of like developing conversation. I'm not sure, but if there's any incentives to keep businesses open over the winter, if that's what we want to.
We tried to do that. And we actually, we call all the businesses and say, hey, we are doing this campaign. What do you think? There were, you know what? My employees need a break. They, they want to live more.
When was that?
Two years ago. Two years, three years before COVID.
Before COVID. And that's where we had a lot of like longer form content. So you know, you know, display banners serve their purpose. You know, visuals in, in fifteen second, thirty second spots, but that's where you kind of tell the story of what to expect. And, and that's where you send them to a specific, you know, blog post or something like that. Because there is a lot to kind of learn and understand when you come down there during that season. And I think this is maybe the fourth year that the state has allocated specific funding for winter in Southern Utah, their campaign. Um, and I think that we allocated a little bit more this year. So at least from that upper umbrella, I know it's important to use all of the steps. Um, to, to promote Moab. Um, but they have seen success kind of year over year of, of bookings and figuring out the right people that do want to come down. But a lot of that messaging is in what to expect because of kind of the weather and, and businesses not maybe being open. And just making sure that audiences understand that experience versus, you know, some of the other seasons.
You might be trapped in Denver because you can't get here.
Well, I mean, I, what we're seeing too, and I don't know if it's true for anybody else on the council, but like since COVID, the, the demographic of the guest has changed as well. Like we fairly busy and a lot of it is because people that don't want to come here when there's a million people.
Yeah.
Uh, but the messaging, like there's a lot of questions. Is it open? Can I go? Do I need a reservation? It's like, I feel like a lot of education that needs to go on um, to kind of create that. And I know that there's a lot of, there's still a lot of, I feel personally, like concerts and special events going on.
Correct.
Um, that are, are more than enough to bring people down here. We just need to kind of coordinate that effort.
One of you manage expectations, but you know, really not everything is going to be open. You come in, but, but that's pretty appeal is that there's not.
Here, here's, here's a list of ten awesome local restaurant recipes that you can make it. You're a B and B.
And uh.
Me yourself, you know.
So one more thing, uh, what we're talking about spreading out and coordinating. Do we, do we know when the film crews are coming back and like, have we, have we, you know, tried to coordinate there at all with how many film crews will be in town? I don't know, throughout the year.
Question being like, when does Riden come back to shoot in the spring?
Yeah. And how many? Yeah. How many hotel rooms will we have available and just, just keeping coordination with the films would be good.
Awesome. Sure. Yeah. What, what's, what's the?
It's called TBD. Uh, they're not, they will be coming back at some point. Their, their production office is set up here.
Yeah.
They'll be filming a fair amount of it in St. George to start, it sounds like, according to Ken. Your my Christmas message. Um. Some dude, the cowboy hat.
Yeah.
Um, and uh.
KFC, Kevin freaking Costner.
Fucking change. KFC, um, so, uh, it's still TBD, but they'll, they'll be here and they're gonna be here for a fair amount of time. Uh, but it, I don't, I don't, and, and as soon as I know that information, I you know, I'd love to be able to share what I can, but they, I am not the travel coordinator. I don't put their hotels or their accommodations across the board. So.
So we, we were approached, we resolved it. It's pretty much they're gonna start in St. George in April, about six weeks, I think, is what they're looking at. And then.
But now I was told yesterday that they could start as soon as February in St. George, so that might move everything forward. So every, literally until they are, you know.
Until they're here, until they're not here.
Right. Got it.
But they all, I mean, they took, had a very large amount of hotel rooms.
How many rooms do they?
It's very fluid.
Because it's the, the, the crew that's here and based here that works on it every day for the number of months. It had, was, you know, in mostly in hotels and then some in long-term overnight rentals, not taking anything away from housing that could be used for the community, which was a very large part of my thing, don't, cannot do that. Um, but then there are the cast members that are only coming for a few days at a time or a couple of weeks at a time and then they leave again. You know, so it's, it is a very fluid rotating thing. And it also very much depends on what their location is that they're filming at, where they will be staying.
Yeah. So hard to plan around, can't really.
It's very hard to plan around. I mean, I, yeah.
Yeah.
I wish I could plan around it, but they're not also the only film crew coming into town.
Yeah.
I, I just worked with a group that was here in November. I'm sorry, right before the holidays, that is supposedly coming back. I mean, that's some smaller crew and it's just a constant. Yeah, it's, uh. I don't know till I know.
Yeah.
But when I do. And they're, and they're, and they're trying to fly in. I mean, that's the same thing. Like it's gonna be very difficult for them to get here. They, but most of, a lot of them come in on private. So you know, that's, that's slightly different, but a lot of them also come in on United and Delta.
Good question.
Good question.
On, and Mark, do you have any other clarifying? I mean, is there anything other stuff that you want to get or any other work or questions?
No, I'm just, uh, Hannah and I are communicating here and looking at our document and taking notes here and looking at everything. So, um, I think we circle back with you.
Yeah. Yeah, I want to be cognizant of everyone's time. Um, and you guys have had a long, a long meeting. I think, you know, we'll just kind of work with you, August, and, and think about kind of those timeframes. Right now, the booking window is about forty-five days out, um, and we can look historically kind of how season over season, we, what we can expect. And so that's something that I'll just pull up in the next couple of days so that we can kind of, again, look at Moab for the next twelve months and understand kind of those, those moments and how to, how to add those funds and markets accordingly.
Yep, that makes total sense to me. Um, so I think, you know, again, I think the only thing that's maybe we, is not really gonna change is that we have a hundred thousand per time entry. And I think the best time to do that in market is yesterday, uh, before the program starts. And, and unless there's any strong feelings from the board, I think that deferring to you all with exactly which uh, platforms to use, you know, we were on a, a host of social medias and TripAdvisor and other online travel advisors, um, whatever was the most effective last year, I think is where we're gonna put that, that money. And then we might, as an office, we might take, you know, a couple of thousand of that to do some remark in town things, whether that's like fill board editing or stuff like that on the top. But that seems like that's not kind of, we don't really need to discuss that too much unless there's any like questions or concerns or quick feedback.
And in case you didn't answer, I think it is a good idea to, you know, not be too heavy in the beginning and leave nothing for the rest of the year.
Right. Cool. So I, I.
I agree with that.
Okay, awesome. And, and we'll go ahead as a team and we'll be with, with love and kind of like shop that, uh, and, uh, bring to the next, whatever that looks like.
Yes.
That transparency.
Okay.
Any, anything else on, on those, on those three items from y'all?
Not from us.
Good.
Okay. Thank you, love team.
Awesome. Well, thanks, guys.
Back there. All right.
All right. So I'll, just the last bit here is I, I made just kind of a, a list of all the other projects that we're working on as an office that, um, if there's any questions or, or kind of future agenda items here, we're, I, we're moving on to the, uh, let's see, the last, the last agenda item here, which is, um, discussion of future agenda items. I'll share this so everybody can see.
I think definitely we need to have the parks service come talk again.
Yep. So that's something.
Give us a, you know, a, a snoss of what happened and what the different changes.
At this point.
Tell us what the changes are. I mean, I, I, I know what the basic changes are, but.
Right. Yeah.
To see how else they're gonna, gonna be mitigating things. Cause I know that they've been having meetings.
Yeah. Yeah. And I think that we, you know, last year we had a really good collaborative process with the chamber and, and the state and, uh, you know, our office and the travel council board, I think we want to continue doing so. Uh, so I, you know, on my to-do list is kind of setting that meeting up. And I think separately also having that after the board, maybe in February would be good.
Yeah.
Uh, can you make an, this, we can return to that. Okay. Um, this is a relatively long list, so just, just kind of wanted to flag, here's what we're working on that we didn't just talk about. Um, so we're, we've basically wrapped up on scope of work in a solicitation um, kind of process for strategic planning that the goal is to encompass both sustainable tourism priorities and ask such questions as what, when do we, how do, when and who do we want to, who are we for the foreseeable future? So that we have a strong mandate to, to really kind of aggressively go after those goals. I feel comfortable going after that without having to, I mean, things will always change, right? But, but, um, having that as a dialogue in tandem with what is um, the economic diversification programming going towards, how are those all connected to a kind of a holistic economic, uh, you know, program that our office is implementing, um, but also identifying here's long-term things that are really great that maybe we're not working on in the next three to five years. So that's, that's something that we've been talking about for a whole year. Um, and as I think finally at a, at a frequent stage, I sent, I sent a draft out to the board. Um, I didn't get any feedbacks. I'm assuming that means that it covered what we wanted to.
So I see the travel planner updates. Is that something that we as a board need to do or is that your staff?
This is basically internal projects.
Okay.
So I'm, I'm just saying, these are things that are on our radar.
Cause I was.
And if someone wants to grab it and say, let's talk about it.
If we need to talk about it or whatever, then that needs to be done sooner than later.
Yes. So, but I guess we, we are aware that we're running out and, and that, uh, Robert has put together basically an interim update so that we have new iteration in there that's not outdated. That we continue to provide those. Uh, the other piece that's tied to that is that we have funding for um, a branding and creative projects to kind of basically follow up on the strategic planning. Here's, here's what you know, all of the different stakeholders feel we should do moving forward. So let's wrap a, um, fresh brand identity out of that. We've done the hard work. Who are we? What are we trying to do? Um, let's activate that and make sure that we have funding for creative to move that forward. Um, so that's gonna be kind of another kind of solicitation process. And that will probably start like halfway through the year as the strategic planning is kind of reaching a point of, we actually know what's gonna come out of that. And we have funding for some of our own media contents. So that's video, written blogs, podcasts, et cetera. Most of the managing, I'm thinking there is to work with local creators, um, uh, to, to just help tell the story that we're trying to tell a little bit more robustly than like, here's a banner ad and come click on a page. So we actually have content on our website. That's the landing page for, um, you know, don't bust the crust and all of that kind of good stuff. And to tell that story in longer form on our own, on our own media. And continuing to work towards kind of managing the short-term rental, uh, space so that we actually know how many are operating, making sure they're in compliance and ensuring that they're paying charity. Um, some data and research stuff. So this is something that has kind of fallen off. Um, but making sure that we basically have like a really good update on what happened in the last month. What's the, what's the international indicator? What's else going on, on the market? Um, and doing that in such a way where that's ready at this meeting and our plan is to work with an outside entity to produce that with the data that we pay for, so that that comes to us and to the community regularly, consistently and transparently. Yes.
Real, just real.
Yeah.
Um, within that data and research, are we gonna get a specific then? Cause I think it would be great to get it specific as like, um, how many visitors are coming for this, for this type of outdoor recreation, you know, hiking, biking, uh, versus not versus, but just like what, what they're coming here for and having like really specific numbers would be great to include in all of that.
So, so in terms of to answer that question, I, I don't think any of the like open box data that you can just kind of buy from existing providers to answer that question. Um, some of the marketing data that we might have from love could have audience segmentation based off of their backgrounds and who they are.
Yeah.
But the other piece here, um, is that we have some funding for doing some kind of ongoing visitor resident business surveys. And so we would be able to say, okay, definitely out of every single a hundred percent of the people here, we know that thirty percent came here annually to promote biking. But it could say out of the sample of people we talked to on this weekend, they are here for mountain biking and mixing this and this and this, um, and kind of taking snapshots, maybe quarterly or something like that. Uh, and that could be, that would be a, I think, playing into that survey. Which would be tied to the, the kind of economic indicator stuff. Um, there's also some funding for some special event analysis. So the idea would be that there's a lot of, um, geospatial data sources that can analyze, okay, all these people came to this one area for this event. Where did they come from? Where did they go in town? How long did they stay in town? Um, that's been a part of the reporting for our special event grants in the past. But it's just asking the event organizer these questions and are they, do they really know how many nights that all of their, like attendees stayed in town? No, that's not really a useful answer. So that's kind of plugging into the special event kind of grant and permit process to make sure that we have better insight to what's going on in the special event space.
Sorry, just, I, it's a constant battle for me personally with the film people because it is a very separate data.
Right.
Thing. And it is very specific to film people when they're spending a hundred nights and a hundred people and what those numbers are. And it is the hotels don't, they don't have to share that information. They can, they are lovely people and many of them are. But they're not all, you know, it's just one of those things. Like I have a really good relationship with many of the hoteliers or whatever, but it's not like a, you know, and it's different for an incentivized project like this. Horizon was, which they'll get all that information. The state has to have it in order to give them the incentive. Or give them the rebate back. But every commercial that comes in, you know, it's just like, and I don't know how to do it better than I tried, you know, with the people that, once they've finished shooting it, I'm in touch with the production company and I'm like, and you've given me how just basic, I don't even know the name of the hotel. How many room nights? How many people? Approximate amount.
Right. I just didn't know it with all this geo-tracking. I mean, all I know is my phone knows every move I make. So your information was somewhere, but maybe.
Somebody's keeping track of you. It's just Google though.
Yeah.
And that's why they're. But yeah, I think you, they just, th- this is, this is, this is at the moment, again, still it's, it's funding without a structure or, or a somewhat to that.
Correct.
Point. Um, so I think trying to take into account those, both of those, I think, would be great if that's possible. Um, we're continuing to do a lot of work with, with, uh, the Grand County Active Transportation Trails, also known as Trail Mix. Um, with responsible recreation programming, um, doing a lot of education, um, they're continuing to do trail ambassador type program. We want to launch a responsible recreation business program. We talked about this last year. Um, there's a handful of stuff in there that, uh, you may even have that, talk about everything in there. Um, art trails, we're, we're funding and we're also talking about putting together basically a, um, a program that would be something that a visitor can actually engage with, um, and have a, a walking tour of all of the kind of murals or sculptures in town. Um, and tying that to businesses that are nearby, uh, the businesses can choose to like offer perks or whatever. Um, but kind of tying to, if I'm in Moab, what do I, and I'm interested in art or, or culture, like what, what can I do while I'm in town? Well, here's this thing, you know, check out all the sculptures. Uh, and then get a bite to eat at a discounted rate at this nearby place. If you check them all out, um, it's really good. Software partner that does this work, that we budgeted to work with and Melissa and Robert and none of them. Um, and we're kind of in the initial phase of fleshing that out.
We're working on something like that for film tourism for twenty twenty-four.
Yeah.
Because, uh, there's a lot of places you can go and see that are super cool that are related to film.
Yeah.
And I, there's a conversation many years ago with the Arts Council about once the city decides to potentially restructure their blocks and things to put in something cool, like all the films that were made, like a Hollywood Boulevard type thing. Um, but within that, there could be, you know, something that you scan that says like, oh, and that you just saw Thelma Louie is now here. There's how you go there, you know?
Yeah.
So, and like I said, twenty twenty-four is like a massive year in film landing. Yeah.
Right. Cause that's seventy-five.
Seventy-five for here, fifty for the Utah Home Commission and a hundred for Golden Age.
And that's why I'm saying four.
Twenty twenty-four. That's like now, tomorrow.
Yeah. Awesome. So that could be, uh, a technology partner to help implement something like that. Uh, I know Utah. Um, as an office, we're trying to kind of keep track and count, you know, calls, emails, messages, um, uh, so that we can kind of report back like volume of inquiry and if there's anything, cause Robert and Melissa know this intuitively because they're on the phone, but I don't necessarily.
We started getting a lot of calls, like today I didn't stop. I mean, I was working there. Should, again, the phone, Robert. People are coming to Moa again. So that's, that's good. We are, uh, most of my calls are about Arches National Park, the reservation, uh, his town is open. His town has a lot of snow. That's the question.
The stop signs up, you actually.
Yeah, that's the questions that I have right now.
Right. Awesome. Um, yeah. So just, you know, obviously this, the work's already happening, but just trying to provide more transparency for myself and for the board of like, we've got this many calls on this subject matter at this moment. Um, uh, uh, something else that's in the works is that we have a really big database of leads that we've gotten through our travel planner program. Um, but besides sending out the travel planner and outdoor recreation guide to these folks, um, we don't currently have an active, ongoing relationship with them. And so we're starting to brainstorm how we can put kind of a direct email marketing campaign to that. I mean, how many people, like quarter million people, something like that.
What about a newsletter?
Well, exactly. Right. Yeah.
Cause you know, CNHA does that with their, with.
Yours is really good.
Yeah.
So, so not trying to be like too salesy, but more like this is a relationship that you have with this town. Exactly. I think a lot of real estate agency that with their list to keep them engaged, even if they went to the lab once, but they, that's definitely, I don't think that can buy condos. It's a cool place. So trying to implement that, which is a resource that I think has been, you know, it's been great, but that's some of the leverage going forward. Um, again, we're working on the travel planner updates. Um, and then the other piece I was gonna add is that um, as we kind of refresh, um, later in the year, kind of all of this branding and creative, we would then do, uh, an update that is, um, in line with that creative. And this would be making sure that we continue to have supply, but also not giving wrong information.
Right.
So it's trying to be lean and fast.
We're running out of travel planners.
Yeah.
This is the mail out piece.
Yeah. So Robert's working really hard on this. Um, we also have funding for additional billboards, whether in town or on the way to town. Um, part of that, that was an ask from the commission too, if we, if we found any billboards that were available to do increased education messaging in town. Um, and then we've also talked about, you know, tying into the responsible recreation piece. It's hard to get people to engage with long-form information about how, like, how do you recreate Moab? That's a difficult question that you can't get in a five-second, you know, pre-roll ad. And so how do you get people to engage with the story and learn a little bit more? Thinking about, you know, time, putting a call to action on billboard strategically placed on the kind of route to Moab, through the drive markets. That says, hey, you're now ready for Moab. Download this podcast and learn more. Um, so that's something we're working with love to also like cite and figure out if that's something that we can do. Um, and then we'd be working internally on the production of the content. Um.
You can tune in to like one, six, two.
If we could buy an AM station, that'd be great.
They're not that expensive.
Maybe we buy an AM station.
I mean, literally you can, it says, I mean, it's not a bad idea.
Well, the park service has.
They do. They do. I go in. I don't think it's that expensive.
Um, make a note, we might buy an AM station. Uh, OHB.
One oh six point.
Um, the changes to the OHB education process is gonna, is a huge question that I think that Recreation is here is talking about a lot. The. The, sure, you've already gotten questions about this, we've already gotten questions about this, is, it's a little complicated, because there's a, a non-resident permit and the education course. Um, and who's eligible and who's not eligible and.
Just FYI. There are no vendors for out-of-state O H V permits anymore, period.
Online only.
Online only. And Maverick and South Shell, we do not sell them anymore.
Right.
Why are you looking at me? But no, um. We were trying to let this, have the state let us continue selling them at the mech, but, um. They didn't, the, they said it was not, there wasn't enough time for the education part of it and to get us. And it's like, well, we had lots of, we had lots of experience with the travel, with the timed entry, I said, we know how to help people navigate through stuff. Um, but they didn't want to do that and then leave Maverick out, and I could see not having Maverick do it.
Oh, yeah.
Sure, yes, I, I know for a fact our staff would have made sure everyone had their, their course done. Before they sold them a permit, I'm not so sure about Maverick.
Right. Um, so, the, what we've talked about is we have, we have some, we have some funding to, um. Get some like iPads or whatever kind of technology at the mix of that, if someone did show up expecting to be able to take it and was. An older person who doesn't have like an iPhone that they can go and take a URL, do the whole thing by themselves, um, that staff could walk them through that.
Yeah, right now we have, um, QR codes.
Yeah.
For people to. They just get it on their, on their phone or whatever, and.
But they can still come in and they have no idea what they're doing, they can still.
Oh, they can come in and ask. We can't sell them.
Right.
Um, last two pieces here, um, on international marketing, um, these two are kind of in Melissa's wheelhouse. Uh, we're trying to work with, um. Uh, a, a, a team to kind of advise on, um, what our specific, like. International market that we're focusing on, which is what the state office of tourism is doing, so we're just piggybacking on their markets. Um, but advising on what our messaging should be within that, um, for those, for those markets and how we should target them. Uh, so there's some, there's some consulting money in there, and then there's also, um, twenty grand for actual cooperative programs, so that's basically. The state working with their partners in, in those markets, um, and add-ons that we can opt in to, so we have, we have thirty grand total kind of going into that. Um, and then there's trade shows and sales missions that Mo, Melissa's working on, I don't know if I speak to that a little bit, it's a busy schedule.
I mean, yeah, I mean, I just finished to book everything because then the prices go so high. For flight, for hotels, so I just finished all my calendar for the whole year, I think my first, uh. Trade show is coming, um. The first, the second week of February, and it's gonna be I A T A, and before that, we're gonna go to the. Tourist Day on the hill, so we're gonna go and tell the legislators and other things. So that's what we're gonna start, and then at the end of the year, we have I P W, that's the biggest event for tourism. So I think we have a pretty good schedule for these. These years, so, yeah.
Yeah, we work with the state, um, to make our budget be the most effective to get by the best places.
Yeah.
As possible, um, and then also going to Canada and to. Is it three? That, that's kind of everything that we're working on, um, and for today. So, I think we had to discuss that now, but this is in the packet, um, in that linked folder, so if there's anything that you want to bring up at the next meeting. Um, let me know, um, we'll be sure to have all board and elect chair and vice chair at that meeting. February, Valentine's Day, um, where we can all share the love. Oh, yeah, that's a really good point, um, we're, we're, um. Still planning to do, uh, kind of building off of our annual summit that, um, we did last year. Uh, so, Sam, it was a collaboration with San Juan County before they're doing their own thing. So now it's called the Grand Summit, it was called the Canals, it's the summit before, um, it'll be on the first of March, um, with kind of an opening dinner on the twenty-eighth. Um, basically on. So.
I'll be gone.
Yeah, we got, well, let me cancel.
I fly back in.
But, uh, working with the event planner so that it can take a little bit less stress on our end, um, but trying to make sure that that's a robust. Um, invaluable space for networking and kind of the conversation on all of the various issues that we touch on on department. Uh, and hopefully start the planning process there. Yeah, I think that's it, yeah, we're kind of the end, end of our agenda and, and during this meeting, thank you all for being here today.